Did you?
A good time. It had like sixteen people.
Oh, wow.
And his friend Tish was there. Helen, you know her? O'Donnell.
Ready?
She was the first woman law graduate from Harvard.
Wow.
And she was, she's still shit.
I guess not.
Welcome. I call to order the town council regular session tonight, Monday, December ninth, and the time is seven thirty-one. And we are honored to have four Eagle Scouts with us tonight that received their Eagle Award yesterday at two o'clock at St. Francis Hall. So I'd like to welcome to the town chambers Christopher Casey, Alexander DeLuca, Nicholas Norges, and Douglas Wright. And they are from Troop Forty-Four Mattoonik with their troop leader, Joe Matthews. We also have a number, another member of the Boy Scout Troop working on a merit badge. So welcome, Dan. All right, if they could come forward, please, and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we have proclamations to give them. If you would come right up here. We could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Aye. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And if you could just stay here, I'm going to read the proclamations. Dan, maybe, Dan, if you wanted to have a seat. So, yesterday at your Eagle Court of Honor, we had the privilege of awarding you proclamations from the town, and I'm just going to read the proclamations. So all of it states, whereas Christopher Casey, Alexander DeLuca, Nicholas Norges, and Douglas Wright have devoted their time and their energy to complete the requirements of and participate in such a worthwhile organization as the Boy Scouts of America, and whereas in their quest to achieve the designation of Eagle Scout, their accomplishments have been many. So to Christopher Casey, whereas his final Eagle project, he worked with the South Kingston Johnny Cake Center in Peasdale, Rhode Island, organized and conducted a community fundraiser to raise monies to provide summer camping kits of insect repellent, suntan lotion, and Band-Aids for at-risk youth that participated in local summer camping activities. The project, which involved eighteen Scouts and scouters from Troop Forty-Four Mattoonik, generated sufficient funds to provide over one hundred camping kits. Whereas Alexander DeLuca, for his final Eagle project, worked with the South Kingston Land Trust, assembled and installed a kiosk at the entrance of the DeValle Trail, as well as serviced and improved existing trails. The project, which involved twenty Scouts and scouters from Troop Forty-Four Mattoonik, took place on parcels owned by the South Kingston Land Trust and the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management's properties in Perryville, Rhode Island. And whereas Nicholas Norges, for his final Eagle project, worked with the school principal in Mattoonik, Rhode Island, to rehabilitate a neglected nature walk, built and installed benches along the walk for resting and gathering points for outside class sessions. The project, which involved thirty Scouts and scouters from Troop Forty-Four Mattoonik, took place on the grounds of Mattoonik Elementary School. And whereas Douglas Wright, for his final Eagle project, worked with the Charleston Land Trust, assembled and installed a kiosk at the entrance of the Mill Pond Preserve property, serviced and improved existing trails and rebuilt foot bridges across streams. The project, which involved twenty-three Scouts and scouters from Troop Forty-Four Mattoonik, took place at the South County Conversant, Converse, Servancies, Mill Pond Preserve property in Charleston, Rhode Island. Whereas Christopher, Alexander, Nicholas, and Douglas have attained the highest, most prestigious award in Boy Scouting, the Eagle Scout Award, bringing pride to themselves and honor to Troop Forty-Four Mattoonik, their family, and their community. May this be a prelude of the future dedication to a purpose and service until all of you have accomplished the goals you are seeking. Now therefore, we, the Town Council of the Town of South Kingston, do hereby extend our congratulations for a job well done, and best wishes in all future endeavors. Nice job.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Good job.
Thank you very much. Oh, I wish you all well.
Good job.
You guys did such a great job. I was so pleased yesterday.
And we had another proclamation, but I don't see him. Joe Tagapatrik, maybe he'll be coming a little later. So with that said, Dale, could we please have the roll call?
Council President Whaley.
Present.
Council Vice President McAtee.
Here.
Councilman Donnelly.
Present.
Councilwoman Haley.
Here.
Councilman O'Neill.
Here.
All members present.
Thank you, Dale. We have the approval of the minutes of previous meetings. We have the work session of November twenty-fifth, two thousand thirteen.
I move approval of those minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries, five zero zero. We also have the regular session of November twenty-fifth, two thousand thirteen.
I move approval of those minutes.
Second.
I second that, too.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Would any council like anything removed from the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Licenses. We have a resolution granting a holiday sales license to Basket Case Three Forty-Three A Main Street, Wakefield, Rhode Island, subject to approval by the Fire Chief and Communication Superintendent. Application by Catherine Gorm, Two-Eleven Sweet Ellen Farm Road, Wakefield, Rhode Island. And this is a new application. Is Catherine here? Welcome. If you could come to the microphone and tell us a little bit about this exciting adventure.
Oh, it's very exciting, buying the store and the house all at the same time.
Wow.
Yeah. So we opened on Black Friday with the help of the previous owner to win, and we've had a couple of great days of sales, and they're generally well-received by the public. We're selling housewares, a few women's accessories, jewelry, and whatever else I can find in the next few weeks, Christmas ornaments. Do you have any questions?
That's exciting. How about your hours of operation?
We're open from ten to six, Monday through Saturday, except for Thursdays till seven, and Sundays, twelve to five.
Right. Any questions here?
I have a question.
Meg?
I'm, I, are you the same Basket Case that was the Basket Case before, or is this a totally different business?
No, it's, well, it's a new ownership, but I've tried to keep it the same as the previous one because it was pretty popular.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I was very confused because I know that they were closing, and then I saw this, and I wanted to make sure that, if you were the same person, I-
No, no, no. It was, it's actually coincidence. I was in town.
Okay.
By happenstance, I saw that the business was going out of sale, I mean, going out of business, but I heard people on the street that were upset about it, and I was like, I'll ask her if she'll sell the business, so.
No, it was popular. Basket, it was very popular.
I broke her into ask her if she'd sell rather than close, and she agreed, so.
How was business on Ladies Night?
Oh, it was great. I heard it was a little slower than previous years, but I'm kind of grateful because I might have hit a little panic attack or something. It was very crowded. A lot of fun.
So Catherine, you never closed, then? The business didn't close at all, did it?
It did close.
Oh, it did?
It closed on November first.
Oh.
And I bought it on November fifteenth.
Nice.
And reopened again, like, November twenty-ninth.
Now, you're not going to expand into the place, the Janiska space, are you?
I don't, not, you know, if he would hold it for me for a few months while I get this one under.
Right.
You know, but I don't think he'll hold the space open.
Hmm. Oh, well, good luck to you. It's a great business.
I hope someone-
And Ladies Night was good.
Were you there?
Yes, I was there. So you look like you'd been there forever.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions here at the Town Council table? Okay, seeing none, can I have a motion, please?
I move approval of new business, item A.
Second.
Motion is second.
New license, excuse me, new license A.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Catherine, best of luck.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Next item is our public hearing. This is a public hearing relative to an application for a license to keep and sell alcoholic beverages in South Kingston in accordance with the general laws of nineteen fifty-six, as amended as follows. It's Class B Victular Liquor License, application for Class B Victular Liquor License by Surfside Thai Food, limited liability, doing business as the Tang Restaurant. Four hundred two A Main Street, Rhode Island, by Nina Conklin, member of the bar and dining room in accordance with special use permit granted December twenty-first, two thousand eleven by the Zoning Board of Review and is further defined in a site plan on file in the town clerk's office. Said licenses contingent upon the issuance of a certificate of good standing from the Rhode Island Division of Taxation, compliance with all town ordinances and regulations, the payment of any municipal taxes and user fees and arrears to the town, and the correction of any fire code violations. So I'm going to ask you to come to the mic, microphone, and welcome, and if you could introduce yourself.
Good evening. Attorney Joseph Scott, representing Surfside Thai Foods LLC. I have Todd Conklin and Nina Conklin, the members of Thai Foods, of Surfside Thai Foods LLC, and also the operators of the facility. Just by way of introduction, actually, the restaurant, the Tang Restaurant, opened up on July eleventh of this year, thanks to this council's granting of a Victular License. Since the opening, they've had very great success. Business is growing rapidly. They are currently doing, unlike, I mean, to the pleasure of your solicitor, they're doing bottling, Bring Your Own Bottle In. He says vote against this so he can keep doing that. He'd much rather have that option, but that has been going very well, but they've had a number of requests from most of their patrons that they do a little larger menu in terms of alcohol and beverage service and so forth. They currently have seating for about seventy-two people. Of that, sixty-four are at the tables, and about eight of them are at kind of a makeshift bar, if you will. There is no bar per se, there's no back-to-the-bar, there's no plumbing or anything in there for the service of the bar right now, but that is, hopefully, if this council were to grant them the full BV liquor license, that they would in fact expand that and put just a small bar in there and keep it that way. They have no intentions of going anywhere near just a large bar or just a bar. Their main function is going to be the restaurant, of which is going to be about eighty percent of their revenues.
Okay. Do we have questions here at the Town Council table?
Well, I just want to say it's a great restaurant, so. I've been there several times, and I agree with Mike, it's nice to bring your own, but I can definitely see why you want to have the liquor license, but you guys are doing a great job, really. And it's very pretty inside, too.
That's where I helped out.
Is that right?
He did all the work inside.
Wow.
Well, I thank you because it is very nice. Thank you very much.
It's a totally different space than it used to be.
And just for the council's information, one of the important things that we think is that it's not one of those situations where they did not put a number of, amount of money, of their own money, into this. They have over a hundred thousand into this, so it's not something they're looking to just go fly-by-night on.
Yeah.
They've actually invested quite a bit of cash into this, not to mention all of the work that Todd and Nina have done in there to upgrade that facility. If most of you have been there before, it needed quite a bit of work, and they've done a great job, I believe. All the equipment in the kitchen is all brand-new. They did a total remake of the kitchen. The outside is, the inside has been totally redone as well, thanks to the landlord's assistance on dividing that up.
Are you open every day of the week? You are? Wow, good. And lunch, I know you're there, because I was there for lunch, too, so you're, you do lunch and dinner?
Most, I'm in the kitchen.
Yeah, it's, no lunch on Sunday.
Oh, no lunch on Sunday? Great.
This is great.
Very good.
Any other questions from town councilors? Jim?
I share the same landlord that you do, and it's most appreciative having that place busy again, and amazing when the coal-fired pizza moved out. They pretty much moved out all the equipment and everything else, and I know the landlord worked hard to help both of you get settled and open quickly, so, welcome to the neighborhood.
Yeah, you've done a great job.
It's good.
Okay, seeing no more questions here, I'm going to open the microphone for any questions from anyone from the public. Seeing no questions from the public, I'm going to ask for a motion to close the public hearing?
I move, I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, and now we're going to move to new business, item thirteen A. Which is on page six. New business, thirteen A, this is a resolution affirming or amending the liquor license rules and regulations, section one, the current number of licenses for each class shall be authorized as indicated below unless changed by a majority vote of the town council. So can we have a motion to?
I move we increase Class B Victular License from twenty-six to twenty-seven.
Second.
We have motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstention, motion carries. The Victular License is now at twenty-seven, and now we can go back to the public hearing. Can we have a motion, please?
I move that we approve the application by Surfside Thai Food LLC, doing business as the Tang Restaurant, to allow them to have a Class B Victular Liquor License, and that said license is contingent upon the issuance of a good, a certificate of good standing from the Rhode Island Division of Taxation, compliance with all town ordinances and regulations, the payment of any municipal taxes and user fees and arrears to the town, and the correction of any fire code violations.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Todd and Nina, good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll be there.
Now I have to build the bar.
Oh, boy.
Well, that's your job. That's your part of the process.
We have a second public hearing tonight. This is a public hearing to consider a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance of the Town of South Kingston, and it's in reference to Article Seven, Standards for Parking Lots and Loading, Section Seven-Eleven, Minimum Off-Street Parking Requirements. And it is basically for the town council to look at lunchrooms, restaurants, and taverns for one space for each, instead of it being three, increasing it to four persons of total capacity. So we are open, the public hearing, and I'm going to turn it over to Vin Murray.
Good evening. The, as the council will recall, this proposed amendment came out of correspondence provided by Town Councilman O'Neill at the council's meeting on October twenty-eighth. The resultant amendment, Article Seven, Section Seven-Eleven, Minimum Off-Street Parking Requirements, would be increased as summarized by the council president in her introduction to the hearing, to go from one space for each three persons of capacity to one space for four persons of capacity. And that capacity is typically interpreted by the zoning officer as seats in a restaurant. In its current form, the proposal would have really broadly amend parking requirements for restaurants in all commercial zoning districts in the town, which would be commercial downtown, commercial neighborhood, commercial highway, commercial waterfront, and our special management districts. In the staff review of the proposal, we came to the suggestion that the proposed amendment may not be a good fit for all, for a number of our commercial zoning districts. So in that regard, it would be the staff's suggestion that the revised standard not be applied to the following districts: Commercial Downtown, Commercial Neighborhood, Commercial Waterfront, the Route One Special Management District, or the Public Marina Special Management District. And in brief, the rationale for that, excluding those districts from the consideration, would be as follows. In the Commercial Downtown District, currently, the parking standards are reduced by one-half on the basis that parking in the downtown area could be shared among users, users, or utilize on-street parking, or the lots, the municipal lots in Wakefield and Peasdale. The effective ratio in the CD zone now for restaurants is one space for each six persons of capacity. So feel that, you know, that CD is fairly well-served at present under the current ordinance considerations. The C, the Commercial Neighborhood District also includes the Kingston Emporium area, adjacent to the university, which contains a fairly large number of restaurants and lunchroom-type uses, as well as Route One-O-eight out of Peasdale towards Kingston, being the Pump House and Coachina Twist. This zone also accommodates the Mattoonik Business District, notably the Ocean Mist, Towers, and La Strada Pizza Restaurant. Reducing the ratio for acquired parking in these settings is felt it may result in spill out into neighborhood areas that create congestions and potential nuisance conditions. And the Mattoonik area is also, generally speaking, the Commercial Neighborhood is properly served by onsite parking, onsite parking. Mattoonik would be an exception, obviously, with a development pattern that predates zoning and relies on on-street and off-premises private parking. And it's also noteworthy, as the council will recall, that parking in Mattoonik was recently expanded along Mattoonik Beach Road, westerly of the Ocean Mist. The Commercial Waterfront District is fairly limited, and it contains restaurants in East Mattoonik, the Mattoonik Oyster Bar and Captain Jack's. Reducing parking requirements in this vicinity is not recommended, as issues relating to parking have been present at the Oyster Bar, and they have gone to the zoning board for dimensional variance, purchased land from the state, and also have their, as people know, they have a valet parking. Captain Jack's conversely has quite a bit of onsite parking available to them. The Route One Special Management District already has a shared parking arrangement under the, under the code pertaining to that, that district, and that seems to be working quite reasonably on a shared basis. And the Public Marina Special Management District at Marina Park is owned by the town, and there are two large public parking lots servicing the area as well as on-street parking, and it's felt that those resources are sufficient for this vicinity. And that, by way of, leads us back to the Commercial Highway Zoning District for consideration under the proposed ordinance. And this area is basically the Dale Carley vicinity, Old Tower Hill Road, as well as a small area on Route One-O-eight, northerly of the Public Safety Headquarters. This accommodates a fairly large number of restaurants of various types and capacities. Think there's twenty-eight, including fast-food venues, which have separate parking requirements under the zoning ordinance. This area also contains significant impervious areas and is considered to be the most autocentric vicinity in the community. The amount of hardscape surfaces in this area has contributed to drainage issues and water quality impairment in the Indian Run Brook watershed, and that has led to DM issuing a TMDL, which is a Total Maximum Daily Load Limitation for the area. In this regard, any means that may reduce pavement in this vicinity would, would be a net plus for the community from an environmental perspective. And more specifically to the CH zone, we would say that, taken as a whole, this area, you know, is, is in many places overparked. Certain of these areas may also have the opportunity to share parking resources without ill effect. Several years ago, we had a commercial highway zoning study done by a consultant, which had actually suggested that this area could benefit from reduced requirements or shared parking arrangements for uses that have different peak period parking needs. And I would say that more contemporary regulatory thinking and planning philosophy would favor sharing parking resources, trying to limit hardscape to reduce stormwater treatment issues, and providing more greening and aesthetic uses for parking lots rather than just an expansive pavement. So given the above, it had been the staff recommendation that the proposal be applied solely to the CH zoning district, and that is so noted in my memorandum to the town manager dated December second. The Planning Board did review this matter as well at their meeting held on November the twenty-sixth. The board voted to recommend the council approve the proposed amendments, limited in application to the Commercial Highway Zoning District. We had provided to the council copy of a correspondence from Chair Maria Mack dated November the twenty-seventh. It is noted that the board expressed some concern regarding the amendments potentially leading to unintended consequences, and the situation should be carefully monitored going forward. I would say that reviews and approvals required for expansion of any restaurants serving liquor should in large measure mitigate the Planning Board's concern. If there were physical expansion of liquor, liquor service area in a restaurant or a building, it would require, it may require a zoning board of approval, and obviously, it'd have to come back to the town council for your consideration. So I think that helps to make sure that there wouldn't be issues that would be, you know, have negative consequences going forward. And in closing, I would say if, at the conclusion of this hearing, the council wishes to approve the proposed amendments, we would suggest that the council's motion reference and incorporate the Planning Board's recommendations and findings as detailed in Chair, Chair Mack's November twenty-seventh correspondence to your attention. I'd be happy to answer any questions if I may that the council may have.
Thank you, Vin. You did an outstanding job. Questions here from the town councilor? Carol?
Vin, when you say the Commercial Highway area is seen as overparked, you mean, like, over paved, there's plenty of parking?
Well, I, I think a lot of the parking lots in, in the Commercial Highway District were in place before the town's zoning requirements would entail landscaping, or they were based on an earlier model when the more parking, the better, and-
Yeah.
I think on an overall basis, I mean, that individual parcels may be kind of tight to it, but generally speaking, if, you know, if you park, you know, there's a lot of parking in there, and there's a lot of hardscape, impervious area, especially up on Old Tower Hill Road.
Right. So that's, that's why the Planning Board and yourselves, they're recommending some shared parking, and if, if at all possible, try and make a deal for after-hours parking with other businesses that close at a certain time.
Yeah, I think, I think, yeah, that's, you know, a business that's just daytime, associated with their parking area, it would sit idly at night. It would be, you know, a net plus if that kind of communication and cooperation among users could, could come forward, you know, in the future. I think it would make better use of the resource.
Mm-hmm. No, I, I think that's a really good idea, because then we don't want to pave anymore area. There is nothing left to pave over there, I don't think. But it, it just makes sense for all the businesses to work together, especially those who have parking with those who may have limited parking, and because they all feed off of one another, and it's in the best interest, you know, it's business-friendly and in the best interest of each business to cooperate and help each other out. So I like the, the whole plan and the way you put it together, so.
Thank you.
Other questions from town councilors?
I have a question.
Meg?
I was, I actually was reading this, and I was looking at the CN, the, you know, I'm not good at acronyms, CN, CH, but the Emporium, Route One, SMD. The one thing that came to my mind when I was looking at this, I just want to make sure that it, to me, there seems to be an abundance of parking in that area. It's just a matter of how it's going to work out for these people. But the water quality issue going down to Indian Run, I want to make sure that's something we have a handle on. I want, that, that should be important to us. I think that was a concern, probably, as I read in my memo, on the, the Commercial Highway District, so.
Yeah, I mean, that whole area watershed drains down to the Indian Run Brook, which has impairments because the stormwater in large measure is untreated. It's also from the state infrastructure in that area. But I think that going forward, that's going to be something the town will have to be creative in terms of trying to address that to improve the water that's received by that Brook.
How, how much would six more, or four more, how, you know, how many more parking spaces, that wouldn't inhibit that, would it?
Well, I think the thought would be that if, if, if less parking was necessary, a rehabilitation of a property, for example, could require less parking than exists currently, and they might have an opportunity to do something for drainage management that would improve it, which would, might, might involve removing some of the hardscape.
Okay. I didn't know that was an issue. I didn't know that was an issue.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's an issue that the town, working with the state and property owners, will have to deal with probably over a fairly long period of time, but I do, you know, and I know- But I do, you know, and I know the town manager's more conversant on this than I, but, you know, the state DEM is pushing towards trying to get some incremental improvements to the stormwater that's entering that Indian Run area.
Good question, Meg. Carol?
I just wanted to add to Meg's. I think by this amendment, we're not recommending any further parking lots or more, creating more parking spaces necessarily. We're trying to utilize less and use what we have to the benefit of the business by allowing it to be one space for three persons, and now it would be one for four in a car. So that we're actually saying less cars. We're hoping for the necessity of less cars, and yet then with the walkable streets, I think it all, we're heading in that direction.
Right. Yeah, it ties together that way.
In no way do we want to add more pavement to the area that's already having a problem with Indian Run.
Right. It's a good idea to try to, you know, better utilize what you have than create more, you know, impervious surfaces.
Right. No, I think it's a great, it's a great idea to increase it from one to three to one to four. So, good idea, Jim, bringing this up.
Jim, you get your chance now, Jim.
Now, Ben, I appreciate your work on this in the Planning Department, and also like the fact that you are correct on Commercial Neighborhood, because Commercial Neighborhood business properties are scattered throughout South Kingston, where I think you've all noticed the map tonight, what, 63, 63 some odd parcels all concentrated downtown with Commercial Highway District, only makes sense. And I did have one question, though. Was the old CD zoning, it was a three to one, were they given a 50% discount by our zoning board, or was that written by?
It's in the ordinance.
So, but is it three to one, or a six to one, or three to one with a 50% discount?
Well, it's 50% reduction of the requirement, so for restaurants, it would work out to.
All right. All right, well, thank you again for your job. Well done.
Any other questions from town councillors? Seeing none, I'm going to open it to the public. If anyone has any questions from the public, questions or comments, that's what a public hearing's all about.
Ella?
Everyone?
Prior to closing the public hearing, I have two communications that need to be referenced.
Thank you, Dale.
The first communication is a communication dated December 5th, 2013, from Keith Kyle, attorney for Costanza Realty LLC, in opposition to the Planning Board's recommendation to amend the zoning ordinance, Article 7, Standards for Parking, parking lots and loading facilities, and the amendment says printed on the agenda. The second communication is the November 27th, 2013, communication from the Planning Board recommending the amendments to the zoning ordinance as printed on the agenda and incorporating findings of fact, consistency with the comprehensive plan, and consistency with the purposes of zoning.
Thank you, Dale. Can we have a motion to close the public hearing, please?
I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second. Do we have a motion?
Yes, I move that we amend the current zoning ordinance. Article 7, Standards for Parking Lots and Loading, Section 711, Minimum Off-Street Parking Requirements. For Section B, Commercial, Type of Use, Minimum Parking Space is Required, Lunchrooms, Restaurants, Taverns, et cetera, one space for each, it used to say three, it'll now say four persons of total capacity. This will be in the Commercial Highway District only, and I also would add that the, this motion would reference and incorporate the Planning Board's recommendations and findings as detailed in Chair Mack's November 27th, 2013 correspondence.
Carol, could I just, just one other thing that we were noticing, and this was referenced when Ben was speaking, and I think Jim asked about it. The ordinance talks about a 50% reduction in a CD zoning district, and so this, just to make it very clear, the change you are making only applies to CH or Commercial Highway.
I did say that, Commercial Highway.
Yes, you did. And I just want the record to be very clear, we do have some opposition here, that the reduction to 50% only applies to the CDs zoning districts, not to what you're doing tonight, which is a CH zoning district change.
Thanks, Mike.
Right.
I don't understand the 50%. What are you talking about, Mike?
Yeah, in commercial downtown, you can further reduce the three, in effect it becomes six.
Oh, okay, that's what it is in the commercial downtown, right?
And that's not going to apply to what you're doing tonight.
Okay, so this is only the Commercial Highway District? Okay.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed abstention, motion carries 500. Next item on the agenda, there are no communications, so it is comments from interested citizens. This is the time, if anyone would like to come to the microphone and make a comment. Seeing none, I just have, Jim?
Do you want to start? Or I'm just going to?
Oh, no, no, you went out there, you didn't ask the council, or you're coming back to the council on comments from interests?
I'm going to do the dates, and then you can.
Okay, fine, all right, good, okay.
I just wanted to talk about the groundbreaking for the Thunder Miss this morning. Absolutely, we're going to have a wonderful healthcare center that is just going to really enhance our community and for our residents, and it will, the groundbreaking was this morning, and they'll be looking at, working on the foundation within the next couple of weeks, and it'll be providing much more enhanced medical care, dental care, nutrition care, and behavioral health. So it was quite impressive this morning, and we wish them all the best of luck. I also just wanted to remind our residents that we do have gift certificates from the Chamber, and it's really wonderful if we can shop locally. So if you're out shopping, if you could keep in mind gift certificates from the Chamber to support our local businesses would be a wonderful, wonderful opportunity. The Center at South Kingston Senior Services is going to have their annual holiday party on Thursday, December 19th, at 10:45 with Peter Filippi, and dinner's going to be served at noon, so that's at the Senior Center. And being about town this weekend, I stopped by Peacedale Elementary School Bazaar and talked to the South Kingston Care, so they wanted to make sure that this town council and the public has a jump on that date for the spelling bee. They were the winners last year, the Town's Care Spelling Bee, so the date is March 13th. The town council can put that on their calendar, March 13th, and it's going to be 2014 at the Elks Club. I also wanted to make reference to the Route 138 Project Area Committee is meeting on Wednesday, December 11th, Town Council Chambers here in the South Kingston Town Hall. And we have our first budget work session, or budget date, on December 18th, for those interested. And should I mention possibly changing some dates tonight? Steve, I'll wait till that happens. Monday, January 6th and January 7th will probably now be moved to January 8th and 9th for our budget sessions, and then we also have January 15th for a joint work session with the school committee. Lastly, I would just like to also comment on the tree lighting ceremony. Our Pocono Recreation Department also just does a fabulous job, you know, with Terry at the lead. It was probably one of the best ones that I've seen, absolutely a beautiful day yesterday. And then the last thing that I just want to mention is the VFW Ladies Auxiliary is sponsoring a dance with excerpts from the Nutcracker. If anybody's interested in attending, it's the Shoreline Dance Company, and they're going to be performing the excerpts from the Nutcracker at the VFW Hall on High Street at 6 o'clock. And they're going to be doing a potluck and donations of sweatpants and sweatshirts to the Veterans Home in Bristol, so if anybody would like to attend that. Other than that, any other town councillor?
Jim?
Yeah, I just wanted to clear up in my own mind, at the last session, we unanimously approved the Matty Fund Road Race. But after that date, Mike Rosello, we received from you a memo on the volunteer flaggers, and I didn't know if that approval that night was subject to your opinion.
No, 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 it wasn't. No, I was just clarifying something that the chief raised in his memo about looking into that issue, and as I put to you in my memo, based upon my research, talking to the trust, et cetera, it's fine for the sponsor of the organization to have volunteer flaggers, yes.
And this had to be going on for decades, because I certainly know major races, South County Hospital for one, they use Alliance Club volunteers, I mean, this has been going on forever, having volunteer flaggers.
I don't know.
Everyone, I don't understand why this was in front of us. I just really am baffled.
I don't know if, and maybe the chief can respond, I don't know if this is the first time that the volunteers were being requested to be at actual intersections and controlling traffic at those intersections. That may be the difference, I'm not sure.
Chief, did you want to respond to that? No.
Anyway, I just, anyway, it was not subject to this, but I wanted everyone to know that volunteer flaggers, I've been seeing them on Route 1 forever, I've lived there for 20 years, you got people and families sitting in beach chairs helping direct traffic along with the police department, and they've done a commendable job over the years, a great job over the years.
They have.
So, again, this was very confusing, Mike, why you had to come up with this.
So, always good to get that imprimatur of okay from the insurance company, et cetera, that said it's, we can go forward and keep on doing what we've been doing.
Well, I certainly understand that, but we've always been indemnified by all these race folks, we've always been careful with that. Okay, and I have a second question.
I just want to say to that, Jim, if it works, why mess with it? It's been working for years, it can keep on working, and road races are part of what we want to do in this town.
I fully concur, as I said, I just don't know why we were making such an issue out of it. That's all, it made no sense whatsoever. We've been doing this forever, it's great for the community, great pro-business, and then this, this one, the Matty Fund and others, good for the town, good for business, good for the community. So I was baffled with it all.
Any other comments from town councillor? Jim?
Yeah, finally, after about six or seven years, Steve, if you remember, or Mike, I can't, a few meetings ago, I asked you about, gee, whatever happened to my resolution on tax exemption, getting South Kingston included in those nine other cities and towns in the state of Rhode Island to be exempt from sales tax? So I've been reading carefully in the newspapers recently, beginning December 1, most alcohol, and I won't go into that, except for beer and malt, is no sales tax. But most importantly, is artwork, and it doesn't have to be generated here, but as long as it's sold in your various cities and towns. So I'm very happy that the General Assembly saw fit to pass this legislation, despite my efforts six, eight, 10 years ago, I think it was, and I think you all remember that. So this is good, that, I've always been wanting to think ahead, think in advance, and I welcome this. But really, for local artists, this is very important, for those of you at home, that 7% makes a huge difference for a lot of our artists, for a lot of our small stores that create product and sell product here. So, very important, and also too, in time for the champagne celebrations for Christmas with the tax exemption.
Champagne and art.
Champagne and art. Great mix.
Mike, my understanding on that sales tax of the liquor, it was just shifted from one to the businesses?
There still is an excise tax, which is paid for by the businesses, and theoretically some of that will still show up, but, you know, other places, whether it be Massachusetts and so, they have those excise taxes too. So eliminating the sales tax does put us in a more competitive place.
But add that to the cigarette advantage that Massachusetts just gave Rhode Island. Major difference. All of a sudden, Rhode Island now, the Division of Taxation said, we'll probably be collecting a minimum $10 million more with having that lower tax rate. So it gives you an idea how competitive these few states are.
May I just give you a little?
Yep, that'll be next.
Yeah.
The only other comment that I have is, was surprised at the town council table tonight, receiving a Christmas card from the White House, absolutely gorgeous, and just a real tribute. So we have a Christmas card to South Kingston Town Council, or Town of South Kingston, from the President. Very nice.
Thank you, Mr. President. That was a beautiful card.
Beautiful. Beautiful.
So seeing any other comments, we'll move on to town manager's report.
I just wanted to clarify, the meeting on the initial budget hearing starts at 7:00. The work sessions that will involve the capital improvement program will start at 6:30, and it isn't tentative at this point, based on the council's confirmation, those meetings will be moved from the 6th to the 7th to the 8th and the 9th, but they will start at 6:30. Probably will go through about 9:00. So those are the sessions that'll start the budget process for us for this year. The advertisements will be in the next issue of the Independent. That concludes all of my items with the council tonight.
Thanks, Steve.
The 7:00 one is the 18th?
Yes.
7:00, yes.
Town solicitor's report.
I want to ask you one question, because I think I just gave you that one now.
All set, thank you. Appointments.
I move that we appoint Jim Garfield to the Route 138 PAC Project Area Committee, as it's required that a member serve as a representative from the Historic District Commission, which he is, I believe he's president of that, is he chairman of the Historic District Commission, Steve, Jim Garfield?
I'm not sure.
Or he's, he's on it, anyway. He is a member of it. Anyway, I move that we appoint him to the Route 138 Project Area Committee.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed abstention, motion carries.
Dale, I don't know how long his term is, or how that goes.
Definitely.
Well, it's an ex-official member of the, of that committee representing the Historic District Commission, so I don't think you really need to set a term on it.
Okay. No problem.
Perpetuity, because how long has that project been in the works? Long before I was on the council, that's been, what, 14 years?
I was going to say something smart, but I'll leave it at that.
All right, all right, thanks.
At this point, what is your pleasure of new business, item F with Joe Tigerpatrick? He's not here.
Did he come in? No, I didn't see him.
I don't see Joe. Yeah. I did try calling him, but he didn't pick up his cell phone, so.
Did you give him the, did you already give him the proclamation?
Yeah, we did. So, do you want me to just re-throw it, and I'll move it to the next? What do you want to do? What's your pleasure?
If he comes and he's already put on each other.
Want to try one more time? Is that all right with you, Dale?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, we'll try one more time, the next meeting, and try to tie him down, maybe I'll pick him up and bring him to the meeting. All right? And which brings us now to new business, I believe, aye? Are we good? This is a resolution authorizing a water bid to Paul Bailey's Chrysler Dodge 425 10-Rod Road, North Kingston, Rhode Island, for 2014 Dodge Journey SE in accordance with all bid specifications and the amount not to exceed $17,406, including trade-in allowance, and is further described in a memorandum from the building official to the town manager dated December 3rd and entitled "A Water Bid Pool Car." Steve?
Six businesses provided price quotes through the bidding process. The lowest qualified bidder and the lowest price submitted was with Paul Bailey for a 2014 Dodge Journey. Recommend the council approve as presented.
Can we have motion, please?
I move approval of new business item, aye?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed abstention, motion carries 500. Item J is a resolution authorizing the submission of an application to the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management for funding through the Recreation Acquisition and Development Grant Program for the purpose of constructing the proposed bike spur from Broad Rock Playfields to South County Commons, and is further described in a memorandum from the Director of Leisure Services to the Town Manager dated December 2nd, 2013. Services to the Town Manager dated December 2nd, 2013, and entitled Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management Grant Application. Steve?
I think the council is well familiar with this project, it's been a resident of the Capital Improvement Program for several years. What we're looking to do at this point is requesting a 50% grant through the new DEM Recreation Acquisition and Development Grant Program. The application was submitted after being drafted by Terry Murphy on Friday. It does require us to have council endorsement of the application. It's looking for 50% funding on approximately a $600,000 project that would provide for the paving of the, the walkway between South County Commons and Dominic Savio Road. It's approximately a 1,600-foot section. In the Capital Improvement Program, we've talked about paving all of that portion that is owned by the town as a municipal project, that still would be probably what the town's cost would be in the $300,000 range. What this would provide is through an easement that would be provided through the owners of South County Commons, an opportunity for us to use public funds to be able to prepare and develop that, that bikeway. We see this as an important project for the town in terms of the expansions of pedestrian ways within the community. Also, this would provide an opportunity for us to provide walking access to the Commons, as well as from the Commons all the way to Old Mountain Field, without going on any municipal street with, with vehicles. So we think it's a great project, if we can receive the necessary funding, it should provide us with an opportunity to expedite that project in the immediate future. We ask the council at this point to provide a resolution of endorsement of the project as presented.
Thank you, Steve. Could we have a motion, please?
I move approval of new business item J.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I just, Steve, what do you think the chances are of receiving this, the grant, the money, the money from the Department of Environmental Management?
It depends on the number of applications that are filed. Because it's a 50-50 grant, some communities may not have the local share available to be able to commit to the project. Hopefully, that should give us an advantage, but until we see the number of applications, I can't be sure. It certainly meets with the comprehensive community plan, it meets with the, the capital improvement program that's been endorsed by the council, so from a local project standpoint, it should rank high. But again, I'm not sure what the competition is until we see what applications have been submitted by what communities.
Great.
Jim, and then Meg?
Yeah, Steve, the easement has to be in place, I assume, before the application is made, and?
The easement is not in place, the easement, we have a letter from the property owner indicating that he would provide the easement. Again, a major portion of the, of that way is an easement which the town already owns.
Yep.
When, when that farm existed, it, in its original form, it went from Route 1 all the way to Broad Rock Road. When the property was split up many years ago, a right of pass and repass between Broad Rock and what became Route 1 was, in fact, a component of any of the sales. That still existed at the time that we acquired the property from the diocese several years ago. So we do have access through a portion of the holdings of South County Commons.
Okay.
The specific location of how we would like to bring that bike path in would mander off where the pass and repass rights have been. So what we're looking for is to have a formal document, and also to be able to look at how the maintenance would be accomplished in the future.
Meg?
My question, I guess you probably did answer, I think that this is probably, of course, the land that was bought from the diocese, but in going to come across to the Commons, is this the access that we need permission to go through from Alex Petrucci, who is the owner of the Commons area, if I'm not mistaken, to cut through that?
Well, the, Mr. Petrucci is the major owner of the Commons property, and he would provide us with a defined easement that would provide access to the area right behind where the gym is located, which is just to the, to the west of the, the movie theater. Would come up the back there and provide access to the Commons. One other access point would have been through the residential development, which we felt was inappropriate based on the, the closeness of those residential units. So we think that that's the preferred route, and one that's been discussed with the property owner.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just want to say that this is really a highlight for me, I can't wait. This is supposed to be the best part of that bike path, and it's going to be exciting if this, we get this. So.
I would mention that the, the cost is relatively high for this type of a project, but there are wetlands involved, and one of the things that is, is really the logistics, being able to get the vehicles in, to be able to do both the subsurface arrangement and then the paving, since there's really no turnaround points within that 1,600 feet, logistically, there may be a requirement that it's going to cost additional dollars, as well as, because it's a cantilevered, treed walkway at this point, we want to ensure that proper means and methods are used to protect that, that canopy.
Right. Good point.
Steve, there's a sign like every so many feet in there saying there's certain pipes or something. When you walk through there, there's signs every so often.
Well, the, that, that is a thruway for the, for the wastewater, for the wastewater pipe that comes from the, from the Commons to Broad Rock Road. So that part, that pipe is identified there.
Mm-hmm. Wow, it's, it's very well marked, I mean, it's, there's several of them in there, but...
Okay, any other comments?
Yeah, it's a great project. I was, as a former resident of the Commons, I just think that's just wonderful, I mean, you can just, you know, hop on your bike or take a walk, and you're, you're down, you know, you're down, and the same thing for people in town, to go up to the movies or what have you. I think that would definitely help in the stabilization and revitalization of the Commons.
We're seeing a great deal of traffic on it as a, as a non-paved walkway, so we think that with those changes that, that would be made with a permanent paved surface and proper access in other Commons, that we'd see a great deal of use.
I, I just used it the other day to walk my dog up to Brood Awakening, so it's, you know, and I'm coming from Broad Rock, so it's very easy, it's an easy access.
Okay. Can we, we already have a motion and a second? We ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed abstention, motion carries. Last item on the agenda is a resolution authorizing the renewal of annual software support fees for Tri-Tech Software Systems, PO Box 203223, Dallas, Texas, for the period January 1st, 2014, through December 31st, 2014, in an amount not to exceed $17,210, and is further described in a memorandum from the police chief to the town manager dated December 3rd, 2013, entitled Tri-Tech slash IMC Computer Annual Support Fees Recommendation for Renewal.
Recommendations, council approve as presented. The, the overall increase is about $140 over the current year, where we take a look at each of the different elements and, and different modules that are in use. IMC is used by, I believe, every police department but one in the state of Rhode Island. So until we see a change with the way public safety documentation is handled, I think we're going to be with Tri-Tech or the IMC system for some time in the future. Ask the council to approve it as presented.
I move approval of new business item L.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed abstention, motion carries five zero zero.
Motion to adjourn.
I just want to wish all of you, this is our last meeting for, before the holiday, wish all of you very special moments, warmth, peace, and happiness with your families, and always remember the elderly, or maybe a neighbor that has a military family that has that empty seat at the table. So with that said, we have a motion to adjourn. Can we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, meeting is adjourned at 8:30.